Welcome back everyone. Further debate councillor Shree.
Thanks, just wanted to speak briefly on the bikeways presentation and our cycling strategy. I'm not sure is councillor Murphy in the room? Might wait. Um.
Uh councillor Shree, I think we should continue, please.
Um, I might just wait until he's in the room because obviously I want him to hear my comments. That's, I mean, he's the chair of the committee. Um, do you know if he's coming back?
Sorry, I do not, but I'd suggest you continue because this will end up on the record anyway.
Sure, um, here he is. Hey councillor Murphy, I was just about to direct some comments to you, but these comments are also going to be relevant to the Chair of City Planning, councillor Adams, to Chair of Infrastructure, councillor McLaughlin, and to the Chair of Parks, councillor Cunningham, in particular.
Before you continue, can I remind you to direct your comments through the, through the chair? We're not operating a party room here, we're operating a council chamber, so all your comments through to other councillors should go through the chair.
Yeah, that, I don't think I've been violating that order in any way, but I'll take your feedback on board. Sure, yeah, so the, there was a lot of good stuff in the presentation we received on bikeways planning and I'm really excited to see some positive steps towards greater support for active transport in Brisbane. I've been a little bit concerned about the timeframes though, and it does seem now that it's still going to be a fair while before we actually have a public document for a bikeway strategy or an active transport strategy, it does sound like it's, it's a fair way from being finalised. And the concern I have about that is that in the meantime, there isn't a strong existing document to guide other parts of council, and this is why I refer to those other councillors. Uh, because for example, if we don't have a, an up-to-date document that says we need a new bike lane along this major road called, say, Vulture Street in, in West End, for example, then there's no hard requirement or, or mechanism to identify the council's city planning team and the development assessment team, et cetera, that we need to set aside space specifically for bike lanes and for example, require a developer that as part of upgrading the streetscape, they might want to install sections of bike lanes in front of, in front of their building. Similarly, in terms of parks, when we're planning some of our major parks, particularly Riverside Parks, like Riverside Drive and West End, if we don't have an up-to-date bikeways strategy, then there's not going to be enough clear guidance for our parks planners that they need to set aside a certain amount of space or a certain width or land area for bikeway purposes. And the same problem arises with infrastructure projects where, for example, we, our Conjection Reduction Unit might have decided they need to undertake an intersection upgrade in Kangaroo Point. And because we don't have an existing bikeway strategy that clearly identifies that we need bike lanes through Main Street in Kangaroo Point, there's no prompt to our infrastructure planners to identify and include bike lanes as part of a new set of traffic lights or an intersection upgrade. So my concern, and I'm interested in councillor Murphy's response to this, but also if any of the other chairs have any comments on this, is how do we ensure that those other teams within council are actively planning ahead for bikeways? Are they just looking at the old bicycle network overlay? Um, are they looking at a draft of the new strategy or the new bikeways plan that hasn't yet been released publicly? And so that, that'd be good to know. Um, but my content, concern particularly in the inner city is around new development projects because I think they're and, and new intersection upgrades, because I think there needs to be really clear mechanisms that identify that bike lanes will be installed along certain road corridors. Um, and to date, I haven't seen that that's, that's happening in any meaningful way, even recent neighbourhood plans like the Dutton Park Fairfield neighbourhood plan and the Kangaroo Point Peninsula neighbourhood plan, these have come through just in the last couple of years. They didn't clearly identify where new bike lanes would be, even though logically we would be installing bike lanes along some of the corridors through those suburbs. So there's, there's obviously not a good existing mechanism to ensure that neighbourhood planning and intersection planning, et cetera, sets aside space but actually designs segments of bikeways here and now. And my worry is that if, if we're still drafting and seeking a councillor feedback on this bikeway strategy in early 2021, that presumably means it's not going to be released and it's not going to be embedded into city plan until quite a bit after that. Um, so what happens in the meantime? Is it going to be the case that for the next year, uh, every time there's a new development um, in, in my area along a road where I think a bike lane is necessary, that the Development Assessment Team and the City Planning Team will simply say, oh, well, there's no current bike lanes identified as necessary there. Um, and similarly, when they want to upgrade a new intersection, as is happening along Gladstone Road at the moment in Dutton Park, it's part of the new high school.
Yep, that's what they're going to do.
There's no clear requirement for separated bike lanes along Gladstone Road because we don't have an existing plan that requires that. Um, so hopefully councillor Murphy understands the concerns I'm raising and will be able to speak to this a little bit. But I'd also be really keen to hear from councillor Adams, as to, through you chair, how councillor Adams sees um, this sort of interregnum period or this transition period operating in terms of new development. Because I know that on some major roads, we set aside land and acquire that as part of the road infrastructure, as a sort of trunk infrastructure acquisition, but we don't do that for all the roads where we're going to need bike lanes in the future. And there are many, many stretches where we're going to need to upgrade the streetscape um, and have off-road bike lanes in front of, running alongside the footpath, hopefully separated from pedestrians. But there's no current mechanisms for city planning or development assessment teams to set, to set that space aside. Um, and that's, that's a big concern, and I think it means that over the next year, we will continue to see millions of dollars spent on streetscape upgrades, on traffic light projects, even on park upgrades, that then has to be redone or undone a few years from now, once the bike strategy eventually comes into play and we realise, oh geez, we should have put in bike lanes there and there and there and there, and we should have got the developers to pay for them at the time that the development was happening. Um, it's been concerning to me that even with the Kangaroo Point River Walk between Mowbray Park and Dockside, we no longer seem to have a me, a clear mechanism to require developers to complete their stretches of the River Walk um, within the current infrastructure plan, I'm open to being corrected on that, but that does seem to be the case now where all we are doing is saying, oh, please set that land aside and don't build on it. But we're not actually requiring the developers to build their section of the Riverside Bike Way. Um, so this is a pretty significant concern which really stems from the fact that what I thought this um, active transport plan and this bikeways plan would, would be out by now. I thought it was going to be released before the council election, um, thought it was going to be released a year or two ago. Uh, and still, we don't have an up-to-date plan and still we're just going off the old bicycle network overlay, which doesn't include any of those hard requirements that I mentioned, so um, it's an ongoing issue. More generally, I'm still disappointed in the overall lack of investment in bikeways in Brisbane. I acknowledge that it's a lot of money, but uh, that money doesn't go very far when we're outsourcing to private contractors and um, designing projects that I think are sometimes a little over-engineered and when we could have delivered similar quality of bike lane infrastructure much cheaper. Um, but yeah, in general, I just want to encourage the council administration to put as much funding as possible towards bike lanes in the coming council budget, acknowledging that we're seeing a big rise in ridership, not just bikes, but also e-scooters and um, that we're going to continue to see greater conflicts between pedestrians and riders unless we get those separated bike facilities along all our major corridors. Um, and so that's something that troubles me a lot because I see these issues emerging in my ward and they're not being addressed and um, it doesn't feel like there's enough forward planning right now, it doesn't feel like we're planning ahead for what the community is going to need in a couple of years. And while I understand that's what the bikeway strategy hopes to do, um, if it doesn't come into effect for a while yet, what happens in the meantime? Thanks.
Uh, further debate councillor Mackay.
Thank you Deputy Chair, I rise to speak on item B, uh, the Green Bridges consultation. As you heard last week Deputy Chair, by building green bridges across Brisbane, we're going to get more cars off the road and we're giving people of Brisbane more choices when it comes to travel. In fact, eighty-four thousand fewer car trips will be made using river crossings per year once the Kangaroo Point Bridge is in, just one bridge alone is eighty-four thousand cars. So this all comes down to fantastic community consultation. And I went through the statistics last week. Personally, from this ward office, we did more than seven thousand community surveys out to the mailboxes of Tuwong and St Lucia. And we also had a, a community consultation event at the Tuwong Library and another one at the St Lucia Community Hall. And I also attended a third one over in councillor Shree's ward at the old South Brisbane Sailing Club. And these were very well-attended community consultation sessions Deputy Chair. Overall, combined with the in-person meetings, the mail and all of the other methods of communication, the community response was very supportive of building five new green bridges. There was very broad support for the Tuwong to West End Green Bridge with about sixty percent indicating they would use it either daily or weekly. That is a huge amount of support. Sixty-seven percent were in favour of the alignment from somewhere on Archer Street to Ollie Park near Forbes Street and West End. Fantastic result. But Deputy Chair, let's think about what councillor Cassidy had to say about this last week. I've got, my mind boggles, God forbid if councillor Cassidy was running this city and more importantly, running the consultation that goes into running this city. In his speech last week, councillor Cassidy said there wasn't widespread consultation with people who would be using the bridges. Well, I'm not exactly sure what he would expect widespread consultation to be, because I'll tell you what Chair.
Point of order Chair. Point of order Chair. I can see that you've called my name, but I can't hear you, so I'm going to assume that I've been called. Um, I, just on relevance, I understand the meeting, um, we're talking about was the presentation on bikeway planning and there was a petition about the Tuwong Bridge, but um, councillor Mackay's comments seem to be ranging a little bit more broadly now, um, and I'm, I wonder if maybe we could draw him back to the topic.
Uh, I believe the report does contain a report on the green bridges and councillor Mackay is addressing those green bridges. So I'm quite happy to let councillor Mackay continue, thank you. Councillor Mackay?
Uh, thank you Deputy Chair. Many of the people from the consultation opposed these bridges catering for buses and other public transport. But what does councillor Cassidy say? Oh no, the LNP would be hypocrites. The, I'll quote you Deputy Chair, the hypocrisy of the LNP and the hypocrisy of councillor Shree in opposing these bridges being proper green bridges is actually quite astounding. Deputy Chair, that sounds to me like councillor Cassidy is saying, don't worry about what the people said in the community consultation. Get rid of that, let's just put buses on there because that's what he wants to see. Now, Deputy Chair, councillor Cassidy is no Bob Hawke. However, he does seem to have the mindset and the thinking back from the twentieth century because he thinks we should focus on additional car crossings instead. And it's no real surprise because it does meet the low expectations that I had for his contributions because I didn't see him at any of the consultation sessions. I didn't, don't even know if he put a submission in about it. But you know what Chair, Deputy Chair, he does say that the consultation process is broken. Because instead of that quoting, instead of that having a so-called Greens councillor who runs around saying he needs infrastructure to get people moving around his ward, he's rallying against the kind of infrastructure that we need. He's calling on more car bridges Deputy Chair. And how's this, a quote, I think this process is fundamentally broken and we need to start again. Deputy Chair, we have gone through massive amounts of community consultation for the Green Bridge at Tuwong through to West End and it will continue because future planning of Brisbane's active travel network will involve providing connections to the new green bridges, which I'm sure councillor Shree would appreciate, even though he may think that I'm not being relevant to the topic, obviously it is. And we're looking forward to moving forward with this transformational project and we will make it easier to get around on bike or on foot or with public transport. But we will take into consideration the will and the wishes of the people who live in the local area. Thank you Deputy Chair.
Thank you councillor Mackay, further speakers. I see no hands rising councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks very much Deputy Chair, and I thank all councillors for their contribution uh, to the debate on this item. Um, just, just quickly covering off on uh, some of the points that councillor Mackay made. I, I, I agree with you councillor Mackay, I did think it was weird uh, that councillor Cassidy was banging on about putting buses through uh, West End, despite the fact that the community consultation that we had done showed very clearly that residents didn't want that on both sides uh, of the river where those bridges landed. Um, I seriously question whether councillor, uh, whether councillor Cassidy has checked with the local state member out that way, Jackie Trad, the member for South Brisbane, just to see what her thoughts were on that. I know he said that they weren't going to be true green bridges unless they carried buses, so um, look, I'll, I'll, I'll just leave that one with councillor Cassidy, I'll just see what he's got to say uh, about that when he goes and does uh, the consultation with the, the local member out that way. Uh, I hope that he's more interested in consulting with her than he was in putting a submission in, uh, on the Green Bridges consultation, because I know despite attacking the consultation, as you say, he didn't put in a submission himself, so uh, again, I will just leave that one with him and I'm sure he'll come back to me in due course uh, with an, an answer to uh, the questions that he's raised there, so. Um, to, to your points councillor Shree on the active um, transport network plan. Um, oh, actually firstly, before I do that, you raise where the missing seven million dollars was from the hundred million dollars Better Bike Ways for Brisbane Programme. Um, and uh, my answer to you is that six point seven million dollars was used for lighting upgrades on those bikeways, so um, not quite seven million, I don't know, what happened at three hundred thousand, I'm sure it was a rounding error in the figures I've got here, but uh, that, that's where that came, uh, that came from. Uh, now on to the active transport network plan, so um, you raised, you raised some legitimate uh, points there and some, some not so legitimate points, but let's just cover off on what the active transport network plan actually is. This is, this is a long-term strategic plan that will integrate as the primary bikeway overlay network does within the city plan at the moment. Now, it's actually very easy uh, to, to have the primary network overlay within the city plan and to, and to plan around that. Most of it is um, on public land or running through reserves or uh, separated. The secondary network is actually where uh, the vast majority of the work uh, gets done in terms of moving people around our suburbs, uh, moving them through our communities and um, that is why we are taking the time to get this one right. The primary network's easy to do, the secondary network not so much. Uh, and, and what I want to see with this and what the Lord Mayor wants to see is that bikeway planning is taken as, as seriously in this, in this city by, by the city plan and by uh, the development community as road planning is, so that when a developer lodges an application, they see um, they see a road take, they go, okay, there's also a bikeway take uh, for that and, and, and that, that rigor is applied. Now historically in Brisbane, that hasn't been the case, that, uh, the bikeway planning has been done in the same way the planning for future roads uh, has been, so that's, that's why we're uh, that's why we're doing the work with the active transport network plan. We've got uh, an enormous network uh, to plan for, we've got eight hundred uh, and fifty-three kilometres worth of bikeway network existing in Brisbane. And as you can imagine, the active transport, and active transport network plan has a significantly, a greater amount of future planned bikeway, both in the primary and secondary networks, so um, you know, we don't apologise for getting this one right and we've got to remember that active transport isn't just about building uh, more bikeways for cyclists, it's about walking, it's about skateboards, it's about scooters, it's about e-bikes. It's about all those things and making sure that, that those users aren't conflicting with each other, so. I, um, I, I take the point that you, you wish it would go faster. Uh, look, the reality is, um, we are, we are pushing for this one, we are going uh, as fast as we can, we've done the primary network, we're working on the secondary uh, network now and we'll continue to roll out uh, an infrastructure build at the same time as doing that, but we have to remember that a lot of the, a lot of the, um, uh, the projects that were easier to do in the primary network have now been done. And there are a lot of costly projects that sit, sit within there. Um, the work that we're bringing forward over the coming uh, weeks and months as part of the, the COVID stuff, that is easier stuff, that is the, the cheapest stuff that we can do, stuff that can be done with signs and lines. Um, so I realise we, we probably will never invest uh, uh, to a level that you will be satisfied with councillor Shree, but we will just have to agree to disagree uh, on that one as, as we so often do.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Shree.
Will councillor Murphy just take one more quick clarificatory?
Sure. Councillor Murphy, are you happy to take a question from councillor Shree?
Thanks for indulging me, um, just for my understanding.
Councillor Shree, councillor Murphy hasn't responded yet whether he would take.
I, I heard he said, so yes.
I said, I'm happy to take it Deputy Chair.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks, so I, I think I understand all, all of that, I'm, I'm just uncertain because for example, the Vulture Street bike lanes, it's already identified in the existing bicycle network overlay as a primary cycle route subcategory, but recently we've had some high-rise developments going along Vulture Street in South Brisbane near the train station and no space was set aside for future bike lanes and the footpaths were designed in a way that's kind of not particularly good for bikes either, it forces pedestrians and cyclists into close conflict. So I, I take your point, but can you just explain how, how is that existing bicycle network overlay functioning and why is it that even on a street that's currently identified on the primary network overlay that developers aren't taking that stuff into account or that we're not requiring developers to take that into account?
Yeah, look, it, it, it's, it's a good point that you make councillor Shree. The, the reality is that council has traditionally delivered bikeways very much in a uh, a, a project-driven sense, so we'll identify a project and we'll go from A to B and we'll complete the project in that way and it hasn't been the case that we can uh, we can just condition a developer to build a, a slice of bikeway outside the front of their development and then just leave it uh, as orphaned infrastructure in the same way that, that sometimes happens with footpaths. And you see developers will add those footpaths outside the front of their development and then council will come through eventually and, and, and connect it up. The, it, it, it is simply not been the case historically that councils delivered bikeways in, in that way. Um, but certainly that would be, that would be, that would be the direction that we would, we would like to head in, in areas where it's possible. And it's not possible in all areas because of constructability concerns. Um, so the active transport network plan, it covers off on all those issues. I'm sure when officers would come out to consult with you uh, on, on the plan, uh, in weeks by the way, not in, um, not in, not next year or, or not in twenty twenty-one, I think, which was uh, claimed, claimed previously by someone in this debate. Um, uh, then you will be able to have your input as each and every councillor in this place will be able to have their input on that plan. Uh, thank you Deputy Chair, I, I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Murphy, uh, we'll now put the motion. Oh, sorry councillor Johnson, point of order.
Yes, thank you Mr Deputy Chair.
Nicole, you're still muted.
Sorry, all the way through that debate, we had ten non-video participants in the council meeting and there were twenty-three councillors, now twenty-four. Um, could you please advise us who the ten non-video participants are? And if you can't advise us, can you make sure their names are recorded in the minutes? Because it shows they are participating in the meeting and we don't know who they are.
Yeah, I'll take that on, I'll take that on notice councillor Johnson, uh, and we'll have a look at that before we get back to you. Uh, we will now put the councillor Murphy's resolution, all those in favour, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Uh, the ayes have it. Councillors, can I draw your attention now to the Infrastructure Committee, please? Councillor McLaughlin.
Aye, thank you Mr Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty, be adopted.
Taken, did.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin and seconded by councillor Maddick that the report of the Infrastructure Committee dated Tuesday, the nineteenth of March, twenty twenty, be adopted. Councillor McLaughlin.
I'll correct you on that Deputy Chair, aye, so not March, but.
Oh, sorry, my apologies, my apologies.
Moving on, moving on. Um, the presentation last week was on uh, the U-turn signal trial. Now, this was something that was commenced uh, by my predecessor in this chair and uh, councillor Cooper did great work in this regard to get this going, looking at the appropriateness of the signs at traffic signals in particular for U-turns uh, and recognising there's a disparity between uh, rules and laws in New South Wales and rules and laws here in Queensland. So what had been initiated, and this was the presentation on the outcome of the trial, was looking at simpler signage and I can't show you the images here unfortunately, but what was presented to the committee last week was a, a simpler sign that tells a clearer picture to those who might want to undertake a U-turn at traffic signals, so um, what this showed is that there's, uh, through increasing the, uh, the, the visibility, legibility of a signage, there has been uh, increased safety, that, that is fewer uh, illegal U-turns at traffic, at traffic lights in particular. So that was the, that was the trial that was undertaken, that was the outcome of the trial. Uh, the next stage is to talk to TMR. I think TMR has been most interested, the Transport Department, Transporter Main Roads be most interested in the outcome of this trial, will certainly share this information with them. Obviously, they have a remit for the rules and laws across the whole of the state rather than just here in Brisbane. But that is, that is the outcome that will be achieved from undertaking this trial is to, to share that with TMR and to see if there's a way of initiating through the, uh, the, uh, the manual of uniform traffic control devices, a, a simple sign that can be adopted across the state. Um, Mr Deputy Chair, there was also a, a petition before the committee last week that was calling for uh, tra, the installation of traffic calming devices in Holland Park West, if there's any debate. Uh, I'll respond after that, thank you Mr Deputy Chair.
Thank you councillor McLaughlin, is there further debate? Uh, councillor Griffiths.
Uh, mute. Sorry, yeah, yeah, I've unmuted, sorry. This, uh, I don't know if you can, can you see that? Yeah. That's the, uh, that's the simplicity of the new sign that is being proposed. Uh, can I say councillor Cooper was good in picking this up, this came out of a discussion at the Infrastructure Committee and she wrote to Mark Bailey, the Minister for Transport and it was good to see that, that this trial got up and going and has been very successful. Um, one of the most successful sites has actually been at Maruka where we have a, a very large issue of people breaking the law at a particular U-turn site. Um, so I welcome this, the Labour Party welcomes this and um, we hope that um, TMR will consider extending the trial or if not approve these signs, thank you.
Thank you councillors, further debate councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor.
Just got the unmute, thank you Mr Deputy Chair, I would like to speak on item A and item B. Um, I'd like to reiterate what councillor McLaughlin and councillor Griffiths said, it's been a very successful trial. And I know that councillor Griffiths said, one of the most successful sites, I have to go up there, the most successful site at Holland Park West at Logan Road and Birdwood Road, uh, but give them their due, there was also a very big intersection upgrade there funded by the federal government that has made it very clear that U-turns are quite awkward at that intersection as well. I, I remember the debate for many, many years that uh, you only put no U-turn at very um, very rare occasions and everybody should know they can't U-turn at traffic lights except where it's signalled, um, which was always frustrating, so this, yes, uh, was a very, very good outcome for the community. Even though it is the law, sometimes people forget and they're looking at what they can do to get easier um, access around the place too, so fantastic outcome and would love to see this, as you mentioned, councillor McLaughlin rolled out across the city at places where we do have issues with people doing U-turns at intersections. With regards to item B, the traffic calming in Sticulia Avenue, uh, been a long discussion in the community around traffic calming in Sticulia Avenue. It is a long road, it is windy, it has several bends and hills, um, a long contested school zone that we can't get because the gate from the, um, school is a hundred metres away from the road. It ends at a busway at the end, it is a district connector, but it is also. It ends at a busway at the end, it is a district connector, but it is also fully residential. Um, and as it said here in the petition, we, I did do the survey for local traffic management in twenty eighteen. We did a traffic count in twenty nineteen. There is a SAM that lives there permanently, which does go a long way to reducing the traffic. Um, but it's very, very separate issues depending on what part of the street you live along, is Sticulia Avenue as well. So even though the LATM survey came back, um, that the majority of the street didn't want it. There is one straight section that comes off Logan Road that were quite, um, supportive of traffic management at their end of the street. And I am working with officers at the moment about what that might look like if it was just a certain segment of the street and whether that can be done. But I'll continue to work with the community on what we can do in this area and, uh, fully support the response that went back to the petitioners. Thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor. Uh, further speakers? There'll be no hands rising. We'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, say, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Those against? The ayes have it. Uh, just before we move on, I might address councillor Johnson's question before, uh, regarding who is in the meeting. Uh, outside of those councillors who have their videos turned off, we have two IT personnel. We have three clerks, we have an authorised officer and also the Chair of Council. So they're the, they're the ones, uh, who are participating in the meeting. Outside the councillors who are not currently present in the meeting.
Uh, thank you, Mr Deputy Chairman.
So now I'll move on to.
Sorry, that was, that was a question.
Oh, sorry councillor Johnson.
That adds up to seven. So there were nine and, and there were ten when councillor Murphy was speaking.
Yes, yes, as, as I mentioned, they were the people in the meeting who are, who were not councillors. So there were some councillors not present at the time in the meeting. Okay? Thank you. I'll now hand the chair back to the Chair of Council.
Uh, thank you councillor Toomey.
You've got to turn it on.
Thank you councillor Toomey, um, environment. Uh, councillors, uh, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty, be adopted.
Taken, did.
It's been moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Davis. So the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty, be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Cunningham?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
To your councillor.
Yeah, thanks, Miss Chair. I was just going to ask if item C could just be taken Sari Adam for voting.
Item C for Sari Adam for voting.
Yep, thanks.
Uh, councillor Cunningham, please proceed.
Thank you Chair. So the presentation in committee last week was about bees in Brisbane, very timely as the following day was World Bee Day. Through you, Mr Chair, I know councillor Mackay is particularly passionate about bees and he actively supports them, uh, the establishment of native beehives in his ward. So keep up the great work councillor Mackay. There are more than seventeen hundred species of native bees in Australia. And as we know, bees pollinate native forests, trees and plants and support biodiversity. European honeybees pollinate commercial crops including cereal, fruit, nut and vegetable crops. And it's estimated the value of pollination services is nineteen billion dollars. So council's efforts to support native bees include installing native bee hotels and encouraging residents to install a hive or bee hotel in their backyard. Council officers grants to, uh, offers grants to support community groups to improve homes and opportunities for native bees to colonise in new areas across our city. And we help save bees by finding new owners and homes for swarming honeybees while removing some wild swarms in some inappropriate places. We're also currently trialling native bee hotels in council parks in partnership with B four C. So in the committee last week, we had a petition also requesting a skate park in Windsor Park. The petition was signed by nine people asking that escape facility be added to Windsor Park. With the majority of Windsor Park dedicated to providing small sporting and community facility, uh, for, for community facility uses. Sorry, I'm a bit tired tonight, Mr Chair. There's only a small section of the park that is allocated for general recreation. So council officers have determined that there's insufficient space in Windsor Park to construct a skate facility that would adequately be separated enough from adjoining residents to mitigate the potential noise and amenity impacts. The second petition, as councillor Griffiths has, uh, identified, was a request to declare a climate emergency. Calls for council to declare a climate emergency were debated in this chamber last year. The truth is, our administration has done more to recognise and address climate change than many other local governments across Australia. And we are recognised as a leader in this space, in this space. Making a declaration won't change the outcome. Our action in reducing our carbon emissions speak louder than words than this, uh, it's been, certainly speak louder than this symbolic gesture. So I'll leave the rest to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yep, unmuted. Uh, thanks, um, uh, thanks, Mr Chairperson. Um, look, I just really want to speak about the climate emergency declaration. Obviously we spent a lot of time last year talking about that and talking about the importance of that for Brisbane City Council. We are the biggest council in Australia. Potentially we've got, uh, the ability to lead and to demonstrate the importance of, um, of what can happen uh, in terms of supporting this declaration. Um, it's disappointing that the LMP didn't support this declaration. Um, this LMP council didn't support this declaration. Um, sometimes, uh, acts and, and having declarations are just as important or go alongside having actions. And we saw that earlier tonight, um, with, uh, with the DV, um, uh, document that was brought through the chamber. You have the, the action plan or the, um, the broad, broad belief that goes with what you're actually doing. Similarly, we believe with the, um, um, with climate change and calling for emergency, um, declaration of, of the climate, that, um, that this would reinforce our role as a leader in the country. Um, it's interesting to note that with coronavirus, I've been reading, uh, National Geographic and other organisations are reporting that, um, the drop in carbon, this has actually been the most useful way of getting a drop in carbon, uh, across the planet. They've, uh, reported that the drop in China of their carbon production is down twenty-five percent. And, uh, across the planet, the, the drop in carbon is down significantly too. We remain committed to, um, to calling for a climate emergency. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? I see, uh, councillor Shree.
Thanks Chair. Also just want to again share my disappointment that the administration is not supporting the petition calling for a climate emergency declaration. Um, this debate has been had at length in the chamber previously, so I won't rehash the entire thing now. But, um, yeah, it, it's quite disappointing and I think, um, I guess I'd hoped that, I mean, we've just had a council election where almost one in five Brisbane residents voted for the Greens. Um, maybe that would send some signal to the administration that they need to take issues like climate change a little bit more seriously. Um, and it's a, a bit disappointing that that doesn't seem to have happened and there hasn't been a big shift in that respect. But, um, I just thought it might be interesting in the councillor Griffiths' point, um, that although the recent COVID shutdown has seen a dramatic drop in, um, fossil fuel emissions and, um, energy consumption, uh, a lot, it, I think also has demonstrated that individual reductions in consumption such as people flying less and driving less, et cetera, aren't, are in and of themselves enough to address climate change. Um, because those significant drops that we've seen in fossil fuel emissions, while in some senses positive, um, don't actually go far enough to address, uh, the climate crisis we're all facing. And so I think it highlights the importance of systemic structural change and in particular, the importance of holding big industries to account. And so when you think about it, we've just had a massive reduction in fossil fuel emissions because of a global shutdown. And that still hasn't been enough to, uh, drop carbon emissions down to where they, they need to be going forward. Um, which I think really highlights the need for particularly broad systemic foundational change. Uh, and that's why people are calling for these climate emergency declarations. Because the, the pace of change that we need and the, the kinds of changes we need are, are dramatic and sometimes difficult to comprehend if you haven't turned your mind to it closely. So, um, yeah, I don't want to labour the point too much, but just again, really disappointed that the LMP isn't supporting this idea of a climate emergency declaration. Um, I should flag that I'll, I'm sure there'll be further motions along this topic in the future. Um, I think it will be interesting to see how and to what extent the administration shifts its position over time. But, um, I, yeah, I'm to the people who, I don't know the people who put this petition together, but I'm, I'm sorry that the administration hasn't listened to you. It, in the grand scheme of things, it would have been a pretty small gesture. It wouldn't have actually cost council very much to declare a climate emergency. It's, um, it's not like a particularly large budget impact to at least acknowledge that we're facing a crisis. Um, it would have been quite an easy thing for the council to do, in fact, um, and yet still no action. So, yeah, bit, bit disappointing, um, and I'd, I'd hoped for better.
Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks Chair. So this so-called emergency declaration is an issue that council's been working on for twenty years. So, look, a large achievement that I think is sometimes overlooked is that in early twenty seventeen, council achieved carbon neutrality. Councillor Griffiths talked about reducing carbon. Council is the largest certified carbon neutral organisation in Australia and this includes our contractors' emissions, something that he would well know. If you contrast this to the Labor State Government for just a second, they can't even get one department of their government to be carbon neutral and our entire council is carbon neutral. So councillor Shree, to your point, for more than half my life, council has been working on practical ways to reduce waste and implement activities that deal with climate change. So I just reject that, um, your, your statement that council doesn't take it seriously enough. This is something that we have been working on for a long time. So I'll commend the report to the chamber. I think we've covered all the points previously.
Uh, I will now put the resolution for items A and B. On items A and B, all those in favour say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And please lower them and, uh, those against, no, and raise your hands. The ayes have it. On item C, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower them. And on, uh, uh, item C, those against, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
The ayes have it. All right, there will be no, there appears to be no division. Uh, I want to move to the next report. City standards of community health and safety, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the city standards, community health and safety committee meeting held on Tuesday, the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty, be adopted.
It's been moved by Mike, seconded by councillor Toomey, that the report is the city standards of community health and safety committee meeting dated Tuesday, the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty, be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Marks?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you. I think it's councillor Strunk. Yep, councillor Strunk.
Yes, yes, thank you Chair. Listen, can I move that the, um, item B be, uh, taken in Sari Adam for voting purposes, please?
Item B, voting Sari Adam.
Yeah.
Sari Adam for voting, item B, uh, councillor Marks.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr Chair. Um, look, there's a couple of questions from last week's committee that we unfortunately didn't get time to answer this morning's, in this morning's committee. So I'm happy to take and take the minute to, um, do that now. So one of the questions we had last week was from councillor Cumming regarding the, um, the two-part progress, projects in Heathwood. Um, you requested details on what was included in these projects and the budget that was allocated. They're probably questions better suited to the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, but there is some overlap in portfolios. And since you've asked the questions here, I'm more than happy to address them. In total expenditure on the Heathwood Park project was one point three million dollars across a number of different funding sources and work was undertaken between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. It involved park safety lighting, sports field lighting, concord net replacement, park cricket facilities, a shelter of fitness equipment and a banner pole installation. The second rotary park project in Heathwood had a budget of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars and was funded through the Ward Footpath and Parks Trust Fund in two parts. The EPS committee approved expenditure in December two thousand and seventeen and June two thousand and eighteen. Stage one involved the building of a new playground, creation of a fleet stroller, installation of a new picnic shelter, taps and bubblers. And stage two involved establishing a multi-level sandstone wall and landscaping. So it sounds like a pretty nice, um, park upgrade. So maybe, um, given your keen level of interest in this particular upgrade, or maybe you suggest you take a drive out there to Heathwood. I'm sure councillor Owen would be more than happy to show you around one of her parks that she's upgraded. The next question we also had was from councillor Johnson about the crash history on which the committee presentation was the Benley Road and Nursery Avenue, um, intersection in Runcorn. As I mentioned, at the time, there was definitely a fatality. So the official, um, accident data is there were eight reported crashes between January two thousand and thirteen and December two thousand and eighteen, resulting in one fatality, two hospitalisations and five incidents requiring medical treatment. The crash data was collected by the Department of Transport and Mainz Road, Road Safety and Management Division based on reports generated by the QPS. As I also mentioned at the time, Benley Road is one of the busiest roads through my area and has approximately twenty-one thousand vehicles per day. Which leads us on to what the committee presentation was about, which was the Benley Road and Nursery Avenue, Runcorn. I did mention in my report last week in committee that I want to pass on my thanks to the council officers, that everyone that was involved in this particular project. It was one that finished, um, on a very timely manner, was certainly came in on budget. And there was very, very little disruption to the local community. So I'm very pleased, pleased that they did such a great job. So on a more public notice, I want to pass on my congratulations to everyone involved in that, um, presentation and that project. And there was three petitions which were brought to the committee. I'm happy to leave them for debate.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Uh, thank you Chair. Listen, I, I want to speak on, uh, item or clause B, the petition, uh, that, uh, that was actually lodged with council, I believe about eighteen months ago. So thank you to, um, um, uh, the new Chair, uh, councillor Marks for rescuing this petition. Um, so I, I was, the comments I made, I didn't want to, I didn't support the recommendation because, uh, whilst the, um, um, the, the issue was something that I, I, I had a great deal of sympathy for, um, it was the fact that the recommendation that I put in was, uh, to vote against the recommendation was because the council, um, hadn't, uh, really achieved the, um, uh, the, the two items, the feeding of birds and also, um, the, um, the transport depot being operated from this particular address, uh, they actually hadn't stopped that actually happening. Now, the recommendation said that they had, uh, curtailed the, um, the transport depot and they couldn't find that birds were being fed. Um, but, um, um, after that, um, after that came through, I checked it out, uh, with the, uh, the complainant and, um, or the head petitioner and found that, that it was still continuing. So that's why I didn't approve or, um, wouldn't endorse the recommendation. Now, a bit of good news, um, we've checked, uh, in recent times, um, um, I think it was just before or just after the election. And, um, there was some mediation that went, uh, on between the, uh, the, the, uh, head petitioner and the person or the property, the under the property that they were complaining against. And, uh, the outcome of that mediation was that the transport, uh, depot or the, uh, the amount of trucks that were actually intersecting or interacting, interacting in that particular, um, uh, street, uh, was greatly reduced. And, and also the, 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 the birds, uh, that they stopped feeding the birds as well. So, um, I, I just, I was just quite astounded that it took eighteen months for the petition to actually, um, come to this chamber. Uh, and, uh, I, I don't know what happened. Maybe the, uh, the new chair can answer that question. Uh, but, um, um, I, I just quite find that quite outstanding or, uh, unbelievable. Anyways, um, thank you Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Uh, Mr Chair, I refer to item, uh, D, clause D, and ask also that it be, uh, taken Sari Adam for voting purposes.
Uh, item D is Sari Adam for voting. Please continue.
Item D is a petition which requests council take action to remove two shipping containers located in a property at eighty-five Walnut Street, Winham. I presented petitions containing a hundred and eighty-six signatures on twenty-seventh August and thirty- I presented petitions containing a hundred and eighty-six signatures on twenty-seventh August and third of September, uh, last year, which is nine months ago. So it's taken a long time for the, uh, administration to deal with the petition. And, uh, I, uh, local residents are most unimpressed with this, uh, building going on in their area. Uh, the, uh, two containers were dumped, one on top of each other, uh, along the side boundary of their property. The, the containers are placed close to the side boundary and affect the views of the bay of neighbours in Walnut Street and the street of the Backseater Street. And, uh, I'm most concerned about this type of development, uh, if you could call it that, uh, occurring in the Wintermanly area. We're already put up with, uh, duplexes being built in the Wintermanly area, some seventy-five of them, uh, approved as granny flats, and the, uh, the builders had no intention of having any related persons living in the, uh, premises. They're advertised as dual income properties. And then we've had many boarding houses built in the area, which have five units, but only two off-street car parking spaces required. So, uh, the, uh, I'm just interested to know what'll be next with this, these containers. I think we'll have an, the next thing will be having an Airbnb establishment using the containers. The ultimate insight though is the response from council, and I'll refer you to paragraph forty-four, points out the property is in the character zone precinct and covered by the traditional building character overlay in the Brisbane City Plan two thousand and fourteen. In the, I'm quoting from paragraph forty-four, "In the traditional building character overlay, houses built inner before nineteen forty-six to be retained, and any extensions or alterations are to complement the traditional building style." So two containers dumped on top of each other are extensions or alterations which complement the traditional building style. That's a fast, Mr Chair, containers complement an old Queenslander. What rubbish. And so anything goes in the city of Brisbane under the laissez-faire Liberals.
Further speakers? No, uh, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Um, yes, I just want to address councillor Strunk through you, Mr Chair, um, regarding his petition. Um, just let you know councillor Strunk through you Chair, that councillor Cumming did speak up on your behalf, um, at that committee, uh, meeting about that particular petition that you had put forward. Um, and I did mention that if the information was still not relevant, to certainly bring it forward again to us. Um, so it's very pleasing to hear that the mediation between the parties has, has worked. Um, I'm delighted to hear it. I think sometimes that's the best way is, is people kind of potentially work stuff out themselves without coming through us. But that was a really good, um, outcome. So I'm pleased to hear it. As far as councillor Cumming's concerned with his petition, what he's talking about, my understanding is this was done through a private certifier. So there's nothing more I can add to that comment other than that's the way it was done. So, um, and that's all I have. So thank you, Mr Chair.
I'll now put the resolution for items A and C. Items A and C, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those against, please lower your hands. Those against, please say no and raise your hands. The ayes have it. On item B, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
And please lower them. And all those against, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
The ayes have it. On item, item D, uh, we will, all those in favour say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
You, and please lower them. And those against, item D, please raise your hands and say no.
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 The ayes have it. Thank you councillors. The Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Howard?
Uh, thank you, Mr Chair. Um, I'll be very quick. Uh, last week, we had a presentation from council's manager of customer services on the work that our business hotline does to support businesses in Brisbane. Uh, we heard also that the business hotline manages the lighting of our council assets and also filming applications, which, uh, was quite interesting for the committee to hear some of those. Um, I'd certainly like to take this opportunity as always to thank our fantastic teams and the incredible work they do. And, uh, Mr Chair, the other item that we had was the petition requesting council keep and protect the Sunnybank Bowls Club as a community space, and I will leave the debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I just rise to speak, uh, speak very briefly on item B, the petition about requesting council keep and protect the Sunnybank Bowls Club as a community space. Look, I just want to say for the record that it just was a silly political stunt by the ALP candidate. I spoke to a number of the residents who approached me about the signing of the petition, and they were led to believe, um, that the building was going to be turned into townhouses on that site. That was never ever going to be the case. Um, everybody knew that. It was just silly nonsense games. Um, the only way that that could ever be turned into townhouses was if the state government re-zoned that site. That site is zoned for sport and rec, always has been, always will be. And in fact, I just saw, met up with the officers today who were able to give me the, the briefing that the outdoor sporting, um, multi-use court, um, is now available for use. It's on the website. Obviously, unfortunately because of the COVID, then no one can actually use it at the moment. So hopefully by the time summer rolls around, people will be able to go on to the website, log on and book those courts for use as part of the, um, upgrade. That we're looking at doing some new toilets, canteen, change sheds as well. Um, the stage two is the, some of the inside interior, um, that needed refurbishing and, and that was all undertaken by council. They did the installation of accessible entry ramps. Um, the electrical repairs and upgrades had to be undertaken because it was completely non-compliant, lighting repairs and upgrades, plumbing repairs and upgrades, air conditioning repairs and upgrades, installation of smoke detectors and fire equipment, and internal ceiling repairs. All of that work has already been undertaken and half of that community space has been used and rent, uh, allowed, let out to many different community groups for the past, um, year and a half since the bowling club, um, ceased their, um, leasing. So, you know, to suggest that we would spend that sort of money and then allow it to be, uh, knocked down, and that was just an absolute nonsense. And I'm looking forward to being out there on the day when the COVID restrictions are listed and the Lord Mayor comes along and we can officially open the multi-use court out there at Sunnybank Community Centre. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks, Miss Chair. I wasn't going to speak, but I couldn't, um, help but have to chime in after hearing that little speech. Um, it was interesting that, yes, the candidate out there, uh, John Prescott, who did a great job, uh, certainly worked very hard in his local community and was very popular, um, did take this petition or did help support this petition. Uh, um, it, the track record of this LMP council is appalling when it comes to bowls clubs. And all we need to do is look no further than Wellers Hills Bowls Club or Tarragundy Bowls Club, where, um, council has allowed that land to be developed. And not just into townhouses, but a high-rise development. Uh, there's been no saving of that land. There's been, I was just astounded to hear how much is being spent on that bowls club, uh, in councillor Marks' ward. There's been no money invested in the bowls club. It has just been that council, council, not the state, has allowed that land to be used for a private development. And they've allowed that facility to be lost to the city.
I appreciate the point you're trying to make, but this is a petition about Sunnybank.
And I know you're making- I agree. I'm coming back to the point, Mr Chair.
Uh, but can I bring you back to Sunnybank, please?
Yeah, I come back to the point about the amount of money spent at Sunnybank and the fact that, um, we have the chairperson of City Standards telling us the standard she received in her ward. Well, I hope that standard is going to be delivered in every other ward to every other community facility like she has received. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Unlikely. Further speakers? Councillor-
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just want to speak briefly as well on this, uh, item B, the petition requesting council keep and protect the Sunnybank Bowls Club. Um, as I was sitting in this committee last week, Mr Chair, um, I, I was actually quite, you know, pleasantly surprised about the level of investment, uh, in this particular bowls club. It reminded me a lot of the situation at Cannon Hill Bowls Club, which is now in council at Atwood's Ward, but last year was in my ward and uh, very similar circumstances there where the lease was surrendered, um, extensive work was required to be done. And I had a number of conversations with council officers about the opportunity to turn these bowls clubs into community centres, exactly what has been done here at Sunnybank Hills. And, um, I think that this demonstrates exactly, um, what council can do when there is a willingness and a, uh, capital expenditure to match, um, let alone I have no idea how much, and I'd be interested to know all of these, um, extensive upgrades that were undertaken, what the cost of that was. Um, we did find out in the committee meeting today that, uh, the synthetic field alone was a one million dollar investment from council, uh, in addition to all of these other works, which, uh, we have heard about, installation of accessible entry ramps, electrical repairs and upgrades, lighting repairs, plumbing repairs, air conditioning repairs, smoke detectors, internal ceiling repairs. Um, in the case of Cannon Hill, uh, there was some upgrades undertaken, but then it was put out to lease, um, which meant that many smaller community organisations in my community, um, lost the opportunity to have a space where they could go to, um, and, and utilise as effectively what is a, a council managed facility. Um, I think this is a, a really good use of council facilities. I think that it enables a lot of the smaller groups to have the opportunity to, uh, as I said, have somewhere to go. Um, I think that this would be an excellent example to roll out to other parts of the city. I'd love to see, uh, council putting up the capital investment to do that. I'd love to see more bowling greens where, uh, possible, turned into synthetic surfaces to save these clubs, uh, money, uh, as well as the use, uh, for other sports, uh, like badminton and soccer and for, uh, practising ball skills. Um, there's just so much opportunity here. So, um, look, I, I support the outcome of the petition and I think that, uh, it could, as councillor Griffith has said, uh, have gone a very different way. Uh, but here, uh, we will see in the upcoming budget whether or not, uh, these types of commitments are rolled out in, uh, non-LMP areas, uh, Mr Chair. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and, uh, I would like to respond to some of the debate through you and, uh, through you, Mr Chair, uh, to, um, councillor Marks, to thank her for her comments. In fact, uh, we actually had a, a, um, presentation in committee this morning about, uh, the synthetic turf that is, uh, part of that upgrade and, uh, everybody was very impressed with that, in, including, um, councillor Cook. So I would just like to correct the record a little bit though on the Cannon Hill Bowls Club. Um, it was put out to tender due to the community demand out that, uh, that way. And, um, it was, uh, something that, um, has been worked through with the, with the council officers. So, uh, through you, Mr Chair, every site is different and we work very closely with the councillor to work out what it is that, uh, is required for that community need. So, um, I see lots of laughter on the Zoom, which is really good that you can see everyone, but can I just say that councillor Marks worked really, really hard for her community and the outcome is amazing and fantastic. So I look forward to working with each and every councillor uh, within the chamber to, um, to make sure that all of our community clubs get the, uh, the, the level of attention that they all deserve and which, as the Chair of that committee, I am committed to, um, achieving. So thank you, Mr Chair.
Unlikely. I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And, uh, all those against, say no and raise your hands. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, please. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My move is that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Huang, that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday, nineteenth of May, twenty twenty be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Allen?
Thank you, uh, Mr Chair. We, um, in the committee, we had a presentation on the, uh, local procurement, um, update in particular on how our, uh, local procurement works at a high level. Um, the outline was provided of the, uh, procurement policy and plan. It sort of gives a high level overview of how we go about procurement. Uh, there was also a section there that outlined the context and scale of council's procurement activities and, uh, one of the headline numbers is that procurement spend is about one point three billion dollars per annum. So obviously, uh, a very significant function within council. It also provided some oversight on the, uh, practices that they adopt in terms of, um, procuring services and products under two hundred and fifty thousand and over two hundred and fifty thousand, and how there's a very heavy focus on supporting local business. It also outlined a number of the successes they'd had in the procurement space and also uh, some of the opportunities. And there's a lengthy list of opportunities in the report for us today. In addition to the procurement presentation, we had a, uh, report on the bank and investment report for March twenty twenty. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? I see no further speakers. Councillor Allen, further comments? With the resolution, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those against, no and raise your hands. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cook.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I have a petition signed by twelve hundred and sixteen signatories to save our sporting and community clubs.
Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. I have a petition from thirty residents in Ash Grove requesting council relocate a Telstra tower.
Any further, I can't see any further petitions. No, may I please have a resolution to accept those?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions are present, that as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in fa- favour say aye and raise your hands. Thank you. And those who, no, raise your hands. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any matters of general business? Are there any statements required as a result of the councillor conduct review panel order? Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Cook.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chair. I will only speak briefly tonight, um, but I wanted to acknowledge, uh, the passing of a long-serving, uh, council employee, uh, Mr John Newkynon, who passed away on the seventeenth of March, twenty twenty. Um, John had been battling illness in recent times, uh, but his passing has come, um, as a surprise to many, uh, including his friends and colleagues in the east region, uh, where he was the parks coordinator. I was only, uh, very recently made aware of John's passing, uh, and I wanted to read a brief statement by one of his colleagues into the council record. Uh, and it says, John worked at council for forty-four years and ten months, and he was highly regarded by his council colleagues and the many elected representatives he worked with during his career. His knowledge of our parks was second to none, and I understand that people from all over the city would call John for his opinion on anything park-related. John's frequent response to park-related questions was well-known to be first, second and third no, with the rationale always being best use in care of the park. He could eventually respond with a considered yes if the work was meritorious. His wealth of knowledge within the parks area at re- east region is incomparable and his legacy will live on for a very long time. Mr Chair, um, I always found John to be respectful and he had, uh, incredible knowledge that extended across many council areas. Uh, I enjoyed, uh, doing our council part tours and, uh, his long-running commentary about the history of um, many sites across my local area. Uh, as a council employee of almost forty-five years, I think it is appropriate and important to recognise his service tonight. Uh, I ask all councillors to keep John, his family, friends and colleagues in their thoughts. Thank you.
You're here. Further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And look, I would just, uh, would like to reiterate exactly what councillor Cara Cook said. Um, it was very, very sad to hear of the passing of Mr John Newkynon. As you mentioned, has been in council for forty-five years, had a very close working relationship with him for twelve years, as he did with my mother for the twelve years that she was councillor in the east suburbs as well. There is nothing that John did not know about parks in Brisbane, let alone RSLs, which was his absolute specialty. He will be sorely missed and there are enormous shoes to fill, uh, Vale John Newkynon.
Further speak, further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thanks Chair. I, um, um, speak tonight and make a few remarks about, um, Sorry Day, National Sorry Day, which falls uh, today, uh, the twenty-sixth of May, twenty twenty. Um, today we remember and, uh, reflect on the mistreatment of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island, the people who were- people who were forcibly removed from their families and communities to be raised in homes or adopted or fostered out to white families. Today marks 23 years since the Bringing Them Home Report, which was the result of a government inquiry into past policies where it was estimated over 100,000 Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children were forcibly removed from their families and their communities. These children were forced to stop learning their language and culture. The first National Sorry Day was held in 1998, 12 months on from the tabling of the Bringing Them Home Report in the federal parliament. National Sorry Day is a day to acknowledge and reflect on the deep hurt and trauma caused by these policies and the intergenerational trauma, which still impacts on Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander families, communities and people to this day. This is an important truth-telling about Australia's history, where from the 1800s right through to as recently as 1970, the government was removing Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children from their families, taking them from their family, culture and their land. Here in Brisbane in 1997, the Brisbane City Council, led by then Lord Mayor Jim Sawley, churches and local Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities began a series of events called Kulgon da Lobol Pa, The Journey Home, to recognise the stolen generation. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander elders led a procession to city hall, where they were formally welcomed by the Lord Mayor. Cultural and historical ceremonies were conducted to mark the starting of a healing process. That year, Lord Mayor Jim Sawley instigated the installation of commemorative Sorry Day plaques in Brisbane Parks as a mark of respect, apology and remembrance to the stolen generations. These locations on or near sites where the stolen generations were removed to. Ollie Park at West End, Pandanus Point, Winham Forshaw, Teralva Park at Evident Park, Kalinga Park, Nunda, Sherwood Arboretum at Sherwood End in King George Square in Brisbane CBD. Each year, we gather at these locations for National Sorry Day to have special ceremonies for remembrance and reflection. However, this year, of course, COVID-19 has presented a significant challenge. We would normally gather for Sorry Day ceremonies in places like King George Square and Kalinga Park, somewhere I've been, each and every year I've been a councillor. But this year is of course different, but no less important. Since 1998, the Nungar Reconciliation Group has hosted National Sorry Day ceremonies at Kalinga Park. And this year, that group has created a virtual Sorry Day ceremony and certainly encouraged councillors and members of the community to join in that ceremony where you're able to. And that is all available on their YouTube channel. With council support, they've also developed educational resources called Towards a Just and Harmonious Future with Local Historical Perspective on National Sorry Day. If we are to heal the damage and hurts of the past, we need to come together to listen to Australia's First Nation voices and recognise the facts and engage in a truth-telling about our history. An important step for that genuine and ongoing reconciliation is for voice treaty and truth as contained in the Uluru Statement from the Heart. It was around a year ago, just under a year ago, this council supported this important movement, which is something I'm certainly very proud of to be a councillor, of a council that has done that. The very best tribute to those who have laid such significant groundwork is to continue to push for greater progress towards genuine reconciliation. Thank you.
You're here. Further speakers? I see no further speakers. I declare the meeting closed. Good night. Thank you, everybody.